Senator, I really like your pen.
Thank you very much. I like it as well. It was a wonderful ceremony last week.
Thank you.
To the board and the town administrator and of course to the committee. I thought it was excellent.
Thank you for joining.
Looking forward to celebrating greatness in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Reyes, and of course Dave Gagnon, thank you. This is Major Joe Bloom.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Major Bloom is the executive officer of the 125th?
126.
126 Cybersecurity Defense Battalion. And I've had the privilege, of course, I thank the residents of the town for the privilege of working for this town in the State Senate. One of my roles in the State Senate is to be the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security Committee for the State Senate. The National Guard falls within our purview. So through the past year, I've had the opportunity to work with the National Guard and watch their many endeavors that they are magnificent at. They are particularly outstanding at cybersecurity, both defensively and offensive capabilities. This summer, I was invited down to the Cyber Yankee Security Exercises that the Mass National Guard hosted at Joint Base Cape Cod. And I witnessed firsthand in action what Mass National Guard can do, led by the likes of Major Bloom, who is the executive officer. At that exercise, you had National Guards smaller than New England, and please correct me whenever I make a mistake here, Major, the Marine Corps, various federal law enforcement agencies, various state police departments around America. And what I saw was simply outstanding. What I am forging, seeking to do tonight is forge a partnership between the town of West Bridgewater and the Massachusetts National Guard in terms of cybersecurity and the assistance and support that the Mass National Guard can render to the town of West Bridgewater. On March 30th, I'll be hosting a forum at the Braintree National Guard Armory, which is the only active-duty armory within my district, but I figured that would be convenient because the Mass National Guard's headquarters is at Hanscom Air Force Base. Of course, the headquarters for the battalion is down at Joint Base Cape Cod. But I would love to invite, and I am inviting, the town of West Bridgewater to participate in the forum and dispatch whoever you would like to from town government to start forging a partnership with the Mass National Guard in terms of cybersecurity for the town. And with that, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Major Bloom to talk about the capabilities.
Okay.
Major?
So as the Senator said, Major Joseph Bloom. I'm actually a resident here in West Bridgewater. My wife's family actually grew up in this town on South Street. So I am the executive officer for the 126 Cyber Protection Battalion. We are charged with primarily the defense of DoD information networks. But one of the things that we are capable of doing and has been charged to us is defense of Commonwealth networks and our towns and municipalities in the Commonwealth. So one of the initiatives that we've begun or we've been working towards as part of our capability set is to provide a service to all towns in the Commonwealth in collaboration with EOPS, EOTS. We're just one program of many, and we have been wanting to bring our capabilities, our expertise, to our towns and our communities. So the 126 Cyber Battalion is, we consist of, we're spread out all over New England, but here in Massachusetts, we have about 60 soldiers who all work, live and work in the industry of cybersecurity. We've worked diligently to establish a lot of partners across federal agencies, state agencies, like I said, EOPS and EOTS, but as well as the Mass State Police and the Fusion Center. And then we've also been working towards establishing some academic partnerships, most recently with Bridgewater State University, as well as some emerging partnerships with UMass Dartmouth, Northeastern University, and potentially UMass Lowell. So as part of that, we're wanting to leverage that, those partnerships to provide, as members of our communities, as members of the National Guard, to conduct what we call pre-incident or pre-incident vulnerability assessments to the towns and municipalities and the Commonwealth. What that involves is coming, being invited into the town and taking a look at your networks, seeing where your vulnerabilities are, and then presenting you with that information that you can then take to organizations, an agency like EOTS, and apply for a grant to remediate those vulnerabilities. Because budgetary constraints and things of that nature would potentially prevent you all from doing that, but we can assist with providing the information necessary to do so. We actually did conduct a proof-of-concept mission for this program about a year ago. One of the towns had reached out to us, asked us for assistance, and we used that as an opportunity to test this capability and this program. What we found was, it was pretty significant, and it was in line with a lot of the news that you see, where the potential for catastrophic damages upwards in the millions of dollars or the potential for a ransomware attack against that network was very high when we went in and took a look at their network. We also found some other things. A lot of their hardware and equipment was vulnerable to even just physical access. You don't necessarily need to be on a network to access someone's computer. You can just walk in and physically plug and drive into it to gain access and gain So the town was actually very grateful at the end of that. We provided them an after-action review and some steps to remediate that, and the town's IT director took those. We have a plan to follow up with them in the next few months to see how well, see how well that's working out for them. But the town was very appreciative. So again, our capability set, all of our soldiers are highly trained. As Senator alluded to, we do, we did host a cybersecurity exercise. We've been hosting a cybersecurity exercise for almost nine years now, as well as participating in other national-level exercises and mobilizations in support of United States CyberCom and Army Cyber Command. So our guys are very experienced, our soldiers are very experienced, very, very well-trained and highly-trained. And we're leveraging those capabilities. And then part of that, too, is not only greens, what we call greensiders like myself, who wear the uniform day in and day out, but we are also attempting to organize a cyber-state defense force. I'm sure some of you are familiar with the State Militia, regular civilians who serve alongside National Guard soldiers, but they're not actually in the military. They just are a part of the organized militia under Master General Law, Chapter 33. So Master General Law, Chapter 33, organized militia, National Guard is just one part. We also have our retirees, as well as civilians who want to, want to serve the Commonwealth in another fashion, but not so much in the military. And one of the, one of the program, and part of this program is establishing a cyber-state defense force, where cybersecurity professionals in the Commonwealth can join the National Guard, but don't necessarily have to go through basic training or any of the rigors that we go through when we join the Army. So leveraging that experience, that, those professionals in another capacity to serve the Commonwealth is another goal of this program. And with that, I'll pause for any questions from the council.
Thank you.
Lot of information to take in. This all sounds very interesting. You were saying, when is the, is it March 30th?
Yes.
There's going to, and where is that at again?
I will be hosting this forum in conjunction with General Keefe, who is the Agent General of the National Guard and of course, the National Guard, and Major Bloom at the Braintree National Guard Armory on March 30th.
Who would be the appropriate person to attend that? Would it be an IT person or would it be someone like us?
You know, Chair Canahan, I would welcome participation from the board, any department head that you'd like to send along, or IT person specifically, emissaries from your police department, your fire department, your school department, anything is appropriate that the town of West Bridgewater would like to dispatch to this conference. I think this is important. Well, we all know what's important, you know, cyber attacks are the way of the future. They're actually in the present. We've talked, Major Bloom and I have had many conversations, and Brockton Police Department was hit several months ago. City Quincy was hit about three weeks ago. Sturdy Hospital was hit several months ago, and you know, the list goes on and on. And I think, well sadly, we live in a very unsettled world, and I believe it's only going to ramp up. And I'm determined to make sure that this town is protected as best we can, and the National Guard is outstanding at this and wants to perform this task for us. And I might add that this will involve no cost for the town of West Bridgewater.
That's always good to hear.
So what does West Bridgewater being involved in this program mean? What, how does, what are next steps? What does it look like to be involved? I mean, I've been involved in like a road safety audit, so we got all the information, and they said, okay, you should do all of this stuff. We take it, and then we look for funding for that. Is this along that same idea? Is it what it sounded like?
Similar. So this is just a way to build your cyber-resiliency. Like I said, the proof-of-concept mission that we did was a relatively new IT director to the town that we conducted the mission at, and he didn't have a good idea of what was on his network. He had old documentation from the previous IT director, but he, he did not have the time or the ability and to actually go in and do what we call a network discovery to figure out what machines, hosts, clients, and who had actually touched the network in recent days. One of the other things that we have found, again, is inexperienced IT staff. So we can come in and augment that IT staff for a time. These missions typically take about 21 days, was how long this proof-of-concept mission took.
So you and a team would come here for 21 days?
Yes, we would send out a team to, once the town invites us, again, we have, we have to be invited to conduct these things. We can't just come out on our own. If the town would like for us to come out, a request would be sent up through the appropriate channels. We would assemble a team, typically volunteers, a volunteer there, they come on orders for a certain period of time, and they'll make contact with the town council and the IT director and establish what your needs are. So the needs really, the needs really are on what the town is looking for. So in the case, like I said, in the case of that proof-of-concept mission, it was a new IT director who just wanted to get a solid idea of what his network looked like, what types of vulnerabilities were on his network, and the best recommendations to remediate those vulnerabilities, to protect his network and protect the town.
So in our town, who would you need? Who would you need to be involved in this? Would you be looking at our IT director?
Preferably the IT director and your IT staff.
I don't mean to look at you, Mr. Sorrow, Ed Sorrow, but he's back there too.
IT is here.
Still Mr. Sorrow to me.
And to me as well.
So is that who you would work with? And it would be a team of so many people working with him to figure out the vulnerabilities?
Yes.
Of, is it just the, well, would it include like the police department and all the different departments within town?
So depending on the type of network, if it's on the EOT, if a host is on the EOTS network or a client is on the EOTS network, we can't touch it. It has to be something that's not, it has to be parts of your network that are not on those EOTS governed networks or EOPS governed networks, because their security operations centers do actively conduct scanning across those networks to detect, to detect and remediate vulnerabilities there. We would say typically your town clerk machines can have vulnerability assessments, credential scanning, if you're connected to the town's Wi-Fi network, and see what vulnerabilities are there. Perhaps checking the physical security of the control systems for the town water and that kind of thing. And that was actually another part of the proof-of-concept mission is we did a physical security assessment of the, of that town's control systems for their water department and found that it was extremely vulnerable. Anybody could access it from the outside and take down the town's water for longer than six hours and cripple the town.
I think this all sounds fantastic. I understand exactly what you're trying to do, and we would be so lucky to get that sort of information. So I'm all in favor.
That's exactly what I'm trying to provide here with this partnership I'm trying to forge, Ms. Anderson. So I hope the town of West Bridgewater will be able to participate, and as soon as you're ready to do so, I can facilitate forging the partnership with the National Guard. General Keefe, our Agent General, and I talk several times per week on various matters. And so I think it's, it will be a great thing for the town, and I'm determined to make sure each and every one of the towns I represent is protected as best we can, and the National Guard is outstanding in what they do in this field and so many others.
Yep.
So first of all, thank Mr. Gagnon. Thank you very much. It's been great to collaborate with on this and to arrange my appearance tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Anderson, and Ms. Reyes. And more than happy to answer any further questions. But we can start getting ready and trying to forge this partnership between the town of West Bridgewater and the Guard through my office starting tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, I think the more information we could disseminate out to the other department heads, too.
Yes.
So that they're fully informed and maybe have an opportunity to attend.
Absolutely.
To weigh in, have everyone work together. That's, that's the way, best way to go.
And it sounds like from going through this process as well, there would be some training opportunities or teaching opportunities to users of the system of what to look out for. I know some of it's kind of at the lower level, you know, scary attachments, but there's all sorts of unique ways out there now to spread a virus or some sort of cyber attack. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be an attack, it'd just be something that really messes up your system for quite a while, more of a long-term annoyance.
Most common, most common attacks are social engineering. Just by talking to, just by talking to you, gleaning, gleaning information about you yourself, your habits, the things that you enjoy, figuring that, figuring those things out, I can access any account that you have.
I know people have been surprised at how I've been able to find them on Facebook, just trailing through all different posts or information I can get that they didn't think you could get on, online, that's out there. You know, just recently learned about the dangers of those QR codes, just holding your phone up to one of them, and the next thing you know, you don't realize a sticker's been put over it, and everything in your phone has just been taken away from you.
It's funny you mentioned QR codes. The funniest thing I saw was during the Super Bowl, Coinbase's QR code that displayed as a commercial on the Super Bowl. I laughed at some of my friends who actually scanned that, who didn't realize that, that QR code could have been compromised and is transmission across the networks.
A lot of learning opportunities.
There sure are, and unfortunately, in this day and age, we have to deal with various rogue nations, criminal enterprises, and malicious actors, and we have to be prepared to ward them off, and that's my intention here.
While we have Mr. Sorrow here, should we, I'm sorry, Ed, is there anything that you would like to add to this?
Our network is supervised or is being monitored by uptemper services in Eastland, and they handle, and I think this all sounds great, but I don't want to just kind of step aside, I guess I'm jumping in.
Oh, we're in there.
So I mean, I'd like to be able to, you know, work something together.
Absolutely.
That we all benefit by.
Mr. Sorrow, everything will be collaborative in nature.
Okay.
And we welcome your input and your participation.
Sure.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had two quick questions. Once, whether it's 10 days, 21 days, whatever the process is to identify the vulnerabilities, when you had done that process, was the time period usually to turn around to report to let us know what we have to do maybe?
We usually do it the very last day. So that 21st day of that mission that we did with the town that invited us on the proof-of-concept mission, that last day, it only took 24 hours for our guys to write up the after-action review and the recommendations for remediation.
All right. And then Walter, you were mentioning earlier, that once we identified what would be to mitigate, we would be able to apply for grants because we'll need funding to figure out what it is that we need to do.
Yes.
Is that something that the committee that you oversee, are grants handed out through your committee, or is there a different process for that?
The grants are handed out, and just to a little bit of a dictionary on the acronyms we've used tonight, EOPS is the Executive Officer of Public Safety, which falls under the purview of my committee, and EOTS is the Executive Office of Technology Security. In my first term representing West Bridgewater, I was the Chair of State Administration Regulatory Oversight, and myself and the committee actually vetted and created the legislation that, vetted it, I'm sorry, the Baker Administration suggested it, and we vetted it and passed it legislatively to create EOTS. And the grants are administered through EOTS.
So it's through E, the EOTS or through EOPS?
Through, it's through EOTS, and I'm committed each and every year to make sure there's the funding for those grants are robust. Obviously, we in the legislature appropriate the money, so that's something I'll be pushing for in every fiscal year to make sure that there are plenty of resources in the way of grants for towns such as West Bridgewater to secure the grants, to follow through on what the National Guard recommends.
And by having this partnership with the National Guard, does it give us any additional flexibility or a lack of a leg up, if you will, when we apply for the EOTS grant?
You know, the criteria is laid out by EOTS, so I don't believe it necessarily gives you a leg up, but I will say this, I will be strenuously supporting the town of West Bridgewater's application.
All right, thank you.
And believe me, your application will be my application.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you.
I just had a quick question, Walter. Is this in conjunction with the, with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, their security system that they're, that they're running? Because they come out and speak to the town clerks about security and grants that you can get through that as well?
Madam Clerk, thank you very much for the question. This is something that I'm doing separately in conjunction with General Keefe, who's our Agent General of the National Guard.
Oh, okay.
This is something I'm doing separately, but I also would like it to be a pilot program for the rest of the Commonwealth, because it's something that as a Commonwealth and as a nation, we really need to boost our vigilance.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Dan. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Senator, Major, thank you for coming in.
Ms. Sheehan, thank you very much, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Reyes, thank you, and Mr. Gagnon. And I think it's great to see Callan Fran behind us. Thank you very much to Callan Fran. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Happy March, Ellen.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Sorrow, do you want to do your budget quickly?
Sure. I don't know where these glasses came from, they're the only ones I have. Nice getting old.
Any new circuits?
Just going through the lines and so forth. Most everything is status quo, except the data processing line has had an increase. They had two pieces of equipment that we purchased with three-year service plans on them. Those service plans are now up, and we have to purchase annual contracts on them. They're expensive, but one is the firewall and the other are the servers, so they're critical.
Can't skip those.
So other than that, I mean, everything within a few, a few dollars really is pretty much status quo.
How do you have a negative department spend in network equipment? $7,200.
Which one is that?
$5,327. Network equipment, it's year-to-date, I mean, as of December 16.
Was something returned or credited or?
It's, it's just because there's, with those lines, there's money for, that's paid out of the water department, school department, and his department. So at the end of the year, they come and will do a town journal entry, and that's just not done yet. So I wouldn't worry about the department spent line, but I would just, obviously, it's funny because he approved $4,800 last year, and he's looking for, according to this, $1,920 this year. So it looks like you're looking for a reduction in that line.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Which one are we looking at?
$5,327, that was the one with the negative figure in the December 2021 spend column. I have it on, do you want to look at mine, Ed? I have it on paper.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
You're not quite sure.
Was there an entry error?
With the negative 7200?
No, no, the 7200 is because of this journal entries.
Okay.
What the press, the request is, is that under Department Request FY23, you're showing $1,920, but you approved 4,800 at this past town meeting. In the prior fiscal year, you spent 2,420. So it looks like you're asking for a reduction in that line.
No, I think I had, put in for 4,800.
Oh, on that line, you meant to put in for 4,800?
I kept it the same as the previous year.
Oh, something's not right there, though.
All right, well, we'll make that change. Yeah, I kept it the same as the previous year.
Okay, so that should be 4,800 there. Well, then what about the line above it?
Internet connection?
Yeah.
That's pretty close to what it was the previous year.
Okay.
I had an increase, increase at the water department. The Comcast for the town itself is, were contract, three-year contract, so that stays the same. Water department and the police department changed a little bit, a little bit of an increase there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you not? Anyone else?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Intelli, do you think you can do yours in three minutes?
You want me to do mine now?
Yeah.
Sure. So I have a minute for each budget?
Three minutes, you can spread them out however you want.
Okay. So the first one is the town clerk budget, and that's mostly contractual. I did put in for $5,000 to preserve records. I used to be able to use the CPC money for that, but we found out a couple of years ago that I'm really not supposed to be using that money. So I, the budget, the budget used to have $5,000 in there a year for record preservation, so I'm hoping to put it back in there because I'm, I've done a lot over the years, and I don't want to stop falling behind again, and I do still have some pretty old records that I would like to get preserved. And otherwise, everything's pretty much standard. I don't know if you have any questions?
Or do not? Does anyone else?
No.
And then the election budget, that's based on the fact that there is three elections this year coming up this fiscal year, as opposed to one that we had last year. So that just reflects the increases. The legislation is looking to make early voting a permanent thing, mail, vote-by-mail a permanent thing going forward, so I have to anticipate costs for that. So you see all the increases and the explanations as to why those prices are what they, those costs are what they are. If you have any questions for that. We do get reimbursed for some of the mandates for early voting, but it goes into the general fund, not into my fund, so therefore I have to have the money in my fund, my account to pay for it, because it doesn't come back directly to me. So you do get reimbursed, it's just not in my budget lines.
It might be helpful on future budgets to maybe show what is reimbursable or?
I have those figures if you, if you want them.
It's just kind of hard when you're comparing year to year.
Right.
Not knowing if you see a significant increase, that a portion of that is reimbursable. Well, should we do that for every budget, then? I don't think every budget has the ebbs and waves that they have.
Right.
Maybe they do, I don't know, but this is in particular.
I mean, I do have, I have printed out what was reimbursed in 2020.
Okay.
If you want to see that, I can get Propies to Warner, and she can look at it, but we...
What was it roughly?
Yeah, what was the number?
I don't even know.
Oh, yeah, but when you say the detail.
I can tell you. So we were reimbursed out of a total of 7,200, $7,029 for the primary, $813. Out of the annual town election, five, about $6,000, we were reimbursed $812. The state primary, which was about $8,600, we were reimbursed $3,754. And the... It covers just early voting costs, so it does, anything that has to do with the early voting period, that's ten days prior to the election, not the extra staff that I need on election day to cover processing all those early voting ballots. So it's just all the staff and costs during those actual early voting days.
What's the reimbursement ratio there? It's not dollar for dollar?
No, it's based off of your staffing and what you use. So say I have, say I have five employees that run the early voting for those ten days, I can get reimbursed for those five employees. But then, say I need those five employers, employees again on election day to process those ballots and put them through the machines, I cannot get reimbursed for that because they don't feel that I necessarily need them, even though I do need them.
Right.
But because of the way the unfunded mandate works, they only cover those actual days. So that's why it's not a tremendous amount, but it's something. And I did get a grant last year to, for five thousand dollars that I did use towards helping to pay for some of those costs as well. And the state did some reimbursements on police officers and, and the boxes that you needed outside to put your ballots in and all of that. They gave us some money back from that, but I'm not anticipating that again for the, for the upcoming elections, so you just have to be prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But I, if you want me to give these to Warner, she can make copies of them, you guys can look at them.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the last budget is the Veterans Memorial Day, and there's an increase of fifteen hundred dollars because the parade is in our town this year. And we're also anticipating doing a much grander parade because it's our 200th anniversary. So let's, those are my budgets.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Pursuant to Chapter 138 of Mass. General Law, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the Eldon F. Murray Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, 645 North Main Street, West Bridgewater. On the application for a new all alcohol off-premise liquor license for AJK GBK Incorporated Corporation, doing business at Borderline Discount Liquor and Tobacco located at 860 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, interested parties are invited to be present and to be heard. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome. Do you want to introduce yourselves, go over the application?
Sure, I'd be happy to. My name is Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for the applicant from Vier and Dijon Filippo. Along with me is Alpesh Barat. Mr. Barat is the president of the corporation. Along with him is Smith Patel. Mr. Patel is the secretary of the corporation there, the sole shareholders. Smith would also be the license manager, meaning he'd be the onsite operator of the store. So before the board, this is an application for the new license at 860 North Main Street, as I'm sure the board is aware. Couple of years ago, the town voted at a town meeting to do a home rule position, which granted an all-alcohol license for this location. So this would be a new build-out of that space. Both these individuals are experienced operators. Mr. Barat owns two stores. They run a very tight ship, no violations whatsoever at any of their locations. Mr. Patel grew up in the industry, his father owned several stores. He's a recent business grad. He'll be taking this on as, as his first new business, but certainly has the experience of growing up in that industry, probably since he was this big. So very experienced operators. Everybody is tip certified. All employees are required to be tip certified as well. They have up-to-date scanning machines at all of their locations. And as I said, no violations whatsoever at any of their other stores. And so with that, they're very excited to join the town. I think it will help revitalize that, that space. These guys are, have had experience in building out new locations within their corporate group, so they, they understand what goes into that. And I think it'll be a beautiful store once it's all completed. We've gotten approvals through all of the other departments. We have our landlord working hand-in-hand with the building commissioner, who seems to be fairly happy with where everything is at right now. They've made the proper corrections that they need to at that space, so I think they're, they're happy in that regard. So certainly I can answer any questions that the board may have. Mr. Barat, Mr. Patel can as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it is an area that we sought after to specifically for this purpose, so that's great. Are there any questions?
How soon are you looking to open?
So A, B, C, C is, I mean, it depends. So they can be four weeks, they can be, you know, six weeks. So it depends a little bit on that. Certainly, you know, while we don't anticipate any problems there, you're always hesitant to start a major build-out until you have state approval. But I think once we have that state approval, they're already putting things into motion, but I think, what do you think for the build-out once state approves it?
I'm guessing a three month.
Yeah, so hopefully at some point in the summertime.
Yes. Do you have any questions?
Just curious, you mentioned you have other businesses?
Yeah.
Are they local?
Oh, yeah, Whitman.
Okay, in Whitman?
Whitman, whole group, yeah.
Okay. Welcome to West Bridgewater.
Lauren, has everything been submitted and Sergeant Warner is okay with everything?
Yes, they did the background check. My only request is that the vote be dependent upon, subject to final documentation, to include the workers' comp and liquor liability insurance, which Attorney Porter negotiated with.
Okay, thank you.
We need to provide that.
And is it a public hearing if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak in support or in opposition? Oh, okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Do I do this first?
No. Please close the public hearing.
Close, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now is there a motion to approve the application?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the off-premise liquor license for borderline discount liquor and tobacco with consideration of Mass. General Law 138, Section 16C, as we have determined the premise is not detrimental, the premise is not detrimental to the spiritual activities of, oh goodness, El Shadi Church located within the St. Plaza, subject to final inspections and final documentation to include proof of workers' comp insurance and liquor liability insurance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks so much. Appreciate the time.
Best wishes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So earlier today, we had the pleasure of going to the Food Pantry for their grand opening and also recognition of Callan Fran Gray. So they're here tonight for proclamation. I don't know if, did one of the directors want to introduce Fran and Call or recognize all their work first?
That's me, I'm the director. So yes, Callan Fran Gray has been running the Food Pantry for 15 years as co-directors, so both very involved in our business and all of the good deeds that we try to do in keeping our town fed. And so yes, and we're going to be sorry to see them go, but they deserve to have a little retirement.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I have a proclamation to read. It's very good to see you and appreciate everything you've done. You know, I'm a big fan of the Food Pantry and all of your work. That's not in the proclamation, that's just me saying. But thank you for everything. I'll read the proclamation now. This is a proclamation of the Board of Selectmen, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, whereas Calvin and Francis Gray have volunteered with the West Bridgewater Food Pantry for over 15 years. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Gray secured the Food Pantry's nonprofit status and formed the Board of Directors, as well as applied for and maintained the Food Pantry's strategic relationship with the Greater Boston Food Bank. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Gray took the time to build relationships with those utilizing the Food Pantry services, all while ensuring confidentiality about their situation and needs. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Gray continuously supported the community, offering 24-hour access to resources, effectively transitioning the Food Pantry distribution from an in-house operation to a fully curbside operation during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Gray have dedicated countless hours in support of the West Bridgewater Food Pantry, all while managing and securing other volunteers to ensure the viability of the Food Pantry. Therefore be it resolved, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby honor and commend Mr. Calvin Gray and Mrs. Francis Gray for their generous and compassionate nature. We extend to them our deepest appreciation for all of their efforts on behalf of the West Bridgewater Food Pantry and wish them well in their retirement. In witness whereof, we have here on two set our hands and caused the great seal of the town of West Bridgewater to be affixed the second day of March 2022. The Board of Selectmen, Anthony J. Kinnahan, Chairman, Meredith L. Anderson, Vice Chairman, Denise R. Reyes, Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say, or? You don't have to.
I'm sorry, I couldn't make it. I was so disappointed I wasn't able to make it. How's the new home?
We're very, very honored to think that the town would recognize us like this. This has been a good day for us. The Food Pantry held a very nice affair this afternoon, and Senator Timmeltie was there, and a lot of you were there also. This has been what we consider fun. We, we love being there, we love doing the work, and after working hard for many years outside of the Food Pantry, it was nice to come in and do something you really wanted to do. And we just thank everybody for recognizing us, including our board, which the new board is terrific and will do wonders for the town. We just would like the town to continue to recognize the pantry and support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations on your new space and your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a picture?
Yeah, we can take a, Ben, we're going to take a quick recess.
Will you take some pictures? Okay.
I just have to go.
Okay.
That's right.[1328.04]
to continue to recognize the pantry and support it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said.
Congratulations on your new space and your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Yeah, we can take a...
Okay.
Ben, we're gonna take a quick recess.
Can we take some pictures?
Sure.
Okay.
I just have to go.
Okay.
When you are. Welcome back. All right, Mike, do you wanna walk us through your budgets?
All right, I basically just have the line items that had changed. And so I'll start with the building budget, 2410. The first line, 5111 is the appointed official, which is myself, is a contractual increase. 5112 clerical salary is a contractual increase for Karen. And we're looking to add a full-time clerk, additional secretary for 35 hours a week. The next one is 5119 assistant inspector, looking to try to get a 19-hour-a-week part-time assistant for myself. And the last line in that budget's 5243, the equipment repair and maintenance is the amount needed for the online permitting, the annual maintenance fee for that software.
Did the fee go up? Or is there a new fee?
It actually hasn't been billed yet until we're implemented with it. So, it'll wind up...
Okay.
I'm hoping within the next few months to get that all finalized and get that system fired. I've actually got COVID on both sides and the busyness of myself trying to do all the inspections and permits and try to review through that software has been a daunting task.
When do you expect that to be up and running? What do you...
Hoping within the next couple of months. I've been trying to dig myself out of one heck of a pit that I've been into. I need to be able to really concentrate. And my brain's been a mess the last few months with the volume of work. So, I'm digging out of the hole. It was a bad hole that... Trying to get a little bit caught up so I can concentrate on that 'cause it's something I need multiple days, if not a whole week, to go through everything and tweak everything to the way we want it to run. So, it's the optimal setup for us, what we wanna do with it.
And when do you have to start paying the annual fee? Is that due...
I think that they said we could do it whenever we want. We could do it calendar year, fiscal, whenever. He said it didn't matter whenever we... I think within a year of once we implement it. But we can do it. Do you want it the calendar year or by the fiscal? I'll probably do it by the fiscal to make it easier after the New Year starts. Do it.
And Mike, I know there's a couple of big projects, Scotland Street, the other 40B next to Booms. But do you just wanna elaborate more on the request for the additional 1.5 employees?
Yeah, so I don't know that with the COVID, it's been a time warp. So, I don't remember if it was two or three years ago, you actually came in to talk to me about the additional help. And I do believe you funded a part-time secretary. But then the COVID hit and all new hires got frozen. So, back then, when I was telling you, like, I know what's happening with the building and the economy based on the permits coming in and the volume of my workload. And I told you back then, if we don't baby-step adding help and we just keep getting blown off year after year, we're gonna get hit with the tsunami of work that we can't keep up with. And we're beyond that point that I'm being stressed out of my mind to be blunt with you, trying to keep up with it all. So, now it's to the point that I can't... And I think I tried explaining that 'cause you, back then, wanted to give me another inspector and not the clerical help. But to run the office, I can't saddle her. She should be helping plumbing and gas too, but there's no way she can help them clerically. And they're going nuts 'cause they're just as busy as I am. So, I wanted the clerical help to be able to then add the inspector. Then we have the help in the office to help line up inspections, more paperwork, more phone calls, and directing the traffic. And also help alleviate with the electrical and plumbing and gas, whatever they may need. So, their times not being bogged down, doing all the clerical work on top of all the inspections and making their jobs even harder. But it's just out of control right now. As David, I think a couple of selectman meetings ago in the address to the town stated, I didn't even realize that the fund-wise, we were up 33% over last year, which, to me, the money doesn't mean anything, which it's hard to explain unless you're in my shoes. The biggest thing, I use those houses on Scotland Street are kissing a million dollars each, the 40B, with 100 houses. Ed Madeiras up the street that's got the mobile home park. His, those million-dollar houses are probably 500,000 or 600,000 construction cost to build it. Madeiras is probably at 60 grand. And believe it or not, I have more inspections with Ed Madeiras because they're manufactured homes. And then he stick building garages and sunrooms and things. So, there's more inspections 'cause I gotta keep going back versus the million dollar. All the foundations are in it once. The framing's all done at once is less. So, to me, that the numbers and money means absolutely nothing to me, which I know in money and sense is everything here. But it doesn't in my world. It doesn't actually correlate into anything that means anything to me. So, I actually just, I know in years past, I've had spreadsheets and tried to explain my world to the Finance Committee and you guys. And it has never gotten us anywhere. So, I just, number of new houses in 2020, we had 19 total. 2021, we had 29. January and February of this year, we're at 20 already. So, and it's not stopping. It's just getting crazier and crazier. And I see the stakes in the ground for that 40B next to Honeydew. And Lincoln Street could be fruition and another 100 houses up of Brockton, the Brockton-West Bridgewater line. That's just one guy can't do it all and it just can't be physically done anymore.
No, I know you've come before the Finance Committee for years and the Board of Selectmen looking for help. But I've stopped in there quite a few times over the past year. You guys are straight out. I was really impressed and really surprised at everything you guys had going on in there. So, I see it.
Yeah. It's not just a perm, as you know, just zoning. Just today, John Delano and I, the headaches that came down the pipes, I said, "This is literally gonna be six months to a year worth of a headache for us to get this two situations resolved."
And I know you've come for money for years. And most of the time, we've held back for different reasons.
Yeah.
But at least I know when I was participating in the message this year, it was to come forward with what do you need and back it up.
The problem becomes is our department's different than most. They're paying a fee for us to provide a service. When I can't provide the service anymore, that's taxation without representation. They're coming in with a $200,000 fee for a building on Lincoln Street and I can't physically do the work or I tell the 100 houses, "I can't get to you. We gotta be there. I gotta be there." You just, I can't be everywhere. It'd be like the police and fire chief being a one-man show. You answer the call, you go to the fire, go to the ambulance, run, that's it. You do the, do the whole town.
I know our town's been expanding so much lately.
It's growing.
It really is.
It's a lot of stress too because everything is money in the construction, like you know, in Taunton. You, "Hey, look, fine, we're doing a project. We don't care if it takes two years to get the permit." Time is money, so they need it. A lot of it on the new homes too, when they punch in new streets, they can't get the bank loan until that permit's in their hand. So, it's, they're on us. And they don't care. They don't wanna hear it that we're busy. Or a week goes by, it feels like 15 minutes long to me. That's how quick the time goes by.
How are you doing with the electronic scanning and storage of records?
That's almost done. They have the main batch done. And I think there's like three or four grand, so they're gonna come and take the rest. I didn't wanna have them take the big files out of the basement only to have to return it all 'cause those are all the old large format plans. So, now they're gonna come and get those. And I should be able to get everything 100% done with the funds that they quoted and we had allocated.
Is everything already indexed so that you can access it?
Yeah. That was the main thing that we set up, how we wanted it indexed. And then, when that's done, I'm gonna have that sucked up into the online permitting. So, when we start with that, the file will be 100% complete with all the new data. And then any of the historic files will be, everything will be in one place.
So, then anyone can go online and pull down the record without having to call you for it?
That's what we're hoping.
Yeah. Is there gonna be a fee or is that free?
No, I think that we'll have it as view only 'cause there's a lot of other companies that he hasn't come. But guys that go around are just companies that are like salespeople coming, who's doing what. And, "Oh, let's go try to sell them windows or concrete or the wood for that project." They'll be able to just go on there and review all the permits being issued.
Okay.
But all the historic info, I didn't wanna get into charging them. And I don't even know how that or if it could work.
But all the historic permits will be on there as well?
Yeah, everything.
Someone says, "I need my pool permit from 15 years ago" for some reason.
Everything that was in our file will be in there.
Now, do you have to save all of the hard copy records too? Or once this is done, there's no statutory requirement? So, it's gonna clear up a lot of room in there?
Yeah.
In there?
I'm gonna have it. I think I told him I want it on three, getting scanned up into it and then encrypted. I want it on multiple platforms. So, if something fails, we don't have the chance of losing everything.
That's a lot of progress you've made. It's good to hear.
Yeah, we have. We've worked hard. And now we need some help to keep the service that we're providing. We need more help.
All right, any other questions on this one?
No.
All right.
Plumbing and gas, okay. So, 5111, appointed official is a 2% contractual. 5112, the assistant inspector, 2% contractual. 5116, this has been something that's been an area of contention for the last six years. Right now, the plumbing and gas inspector has zero on the line budgeted for an after-hour event, like in a storm or something, if he gets called out. And I'm trying to get, which I just average, we don't know what we're gonna get for storms or what event may happen, to get like 1,500 in that line to cover it. So, we have it on the fee schedule that we updated. It's always been on there that there's a minimum for any after-hour emergency for... Not for me, I'm not eligible 'cause I'm salary. But for the electrical inspector and plumbing and gas, if they get called out after the office hours of the town hall, if they get called out at 2:00 in the morning on the weekend, they can somehow get reimbursed for that. 'Cause I don't think it's right. Like, even that, I don't, their whole stipend thing, I don't agree with. But that's something we'll have to work towards fixing. Like, right now, if we did the math to everything, they're probably making 12 bucks an hour when you deduct, especially the electrical inspector. He, out of everybody, has the most after-hour events, emergencies, especially when we have large power outages. So, I'm trying to get him to 1,500. Then this year, I ran the numbers, which I think something's gotta be changed with this. All this stuff was done way before my time. I don't know who developed the stipend and all the line items. But the next one, 5710, they have a travel and phone stipend, which I checked with John and David. And their current phone bill's 120 a month. And they said, both said about half of that is for the town. It's their personal cell. That about 50% of the calls are for town use. So, their plan's equated to $720 a year to cover the phone. Then I asked them to check the, track the mileage, which that I don't even think has been right. There's, it's just a flat stipend. It's not a per-mile fee, which I think it should be. So, they both were about the same. And I worked out with the averaging about 50 miles a week at the current mass and federal reimbursement rate, 0.585 times the year. It came out to 1,521. So, now the phone and the fuel comes to 2247 total. And I think they only get 1,500 each. So, I'm trying to increase that line to get that to at least cover it and be even.
I thought they already had a town phone. They don't have a town phone?
They both have their, a personal phone that they just get reimbursed. But because this has stood for so long with no update to it, now the, and now the fuel, that's changing every week. So, even with the fuel going up there, I don't know how frequent they adjust the mileage rate, but I'm sure that takes time to catch up. But the fuel's the real killer right now. I think those two somehow, which I don't know what the pros... Should be broken out and have an actual mileage and figure out, have them fill out mileage slips, weekly, monthly, something.
What that might be?
I don't know.
How much it's worth for them?
I think it's the only way for it to be right, whether it's high or lower. Just carry an amount and just adjust it each year based on what's going on, obviously. Right now, things are booming and they got a zillion inspections, but it could cool off in five years and they're driving less.
One thing I just wanna make note, on line 5111 and 5112, they're not contractual. Those are non-union, non-contractual employees. We normally do in 5111, at the end of town meeting, going into the new fiscal year, you guys will take one vote for all of your non-union employees. And we usually provide them the same raise as we do everybody else. So, if the 2% is accurate, I just wanna make sure you know that they don't sign a contract. We don't normally provide it for the assistant inspector. Obviously, that's up to you guys to decide. But I just wanna make sure you know it was not a contractual employee.
Okay, thank you, David. Any other questions on gas or electrical?
So, electrical, the only change is he, and I don't understand where this came from, on that 5116 intermittent calls, the electrical inspector has $200, which is kinda like one and a half events and then it's gone. So, his adjustment's a little bit less to get to the 1,500.
Okay. All right, town hall, what?
Town hall, the only change was 5241, and that was a $1,500 increase. I think last year or the year before, the state mandates the generator company to be here. When we do the elevator test, they want the building dumped and ensure that the elevator runs so that they want the tech here. And they make him kill the power and transfer everything. And so, that's what that's for.
All right, anyone have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good evening.
Did he allow you to get comfortable over there?
It's all right for me. Cheryl should be coming. Cheryl's on her way too.
Good.
Yeah, I told her to come early, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you doing?
Doing well.
Good. What are we here for?
Your wife had three minutes, we'll give you five.
All right, that's fine with me.
You're being generous.
We can get involved in their marriage.
So, what do we wanna talk about? The DPW budget, right? Okay. First of all, do you have any questions?
No, just go right through them.
All right, we'll just go right through the, each item then. This is my fifth year with this new DPW. And other than tree work, which we increased last year because we just ran out of money, this is the first year that I've asked for increases in any of the other lines. But I think it's time. We are, the gentlemen, the guys have gone from three-hour to four-hour minimum over the last couple of years in their last contract when they called out. So, that increases over time. We get called at night for multitude of situations, not just car vehicle accidents, but dead animals. So, that has increased, I think, considerably. So, I'm asking on overtime, which was set at 10:538, to go up to 20,000, an increase of 9,400. Okay? The next one would be heating of fuel, which is set at 4 grand. We spent 4,800 last year. I'm asking it to go to 5. Okay? Property maintenance, which had a budget approved of 20,600. We spent 35,000 last year. Some of that was because of our new generator that we installed. And we had a lot of things that went with the generator that we hadn't anticipated. So, that helped with that. But there are other issues and problems we had too, with the doors, with the drainage system, unforeseen things. It's a 20-year-old building. It's starting to show its age. We've had repairs on heating systems, both in the administrative area as well as the apparatus floor. And that will continue. So, I'm asking for that to go to 25,000. That's also property maintenance out and about around all the properties in town, the lawn areas and parks and cemeteries and playgrounds and so forth. Vehicle repairs, we spent 19,700 or 20,000 last year. I'm asking for 25,000. Again, we've spent 19 already, all we did as of December 16th. So, I'm trying to anticipate what that's going to possibly increase to the fleet, even though we have some new vehicles. We have a lot of older vehicles. And when they break down, they're thousands of dollars at a time. So, I think we do a very good job of maintaining what we have. But it's a big fleet. There's a lot of moving parts over there. And a lot of things can go wrong, and they do. Equipment hire, which, that one I actually asked for an increase last year mid-year, and I got it in a transfer. I'm asking that we go right from the 34,500 up to an additional 65, an additional 30,000 to 64,500. Okay? The tree work is non-stop. It's never, we're never able to catch up like we used to. I used to get through the whole list in the course. I used to get through the whole list in the course of a season for the most part, maybe have a few stragglers. With these storms, we can't even seem to get to our regular maintenance. We're doing continuous catch-up. The storms create havoc, and then we have to bring in all this equipment to get trees off of roofs and across, that are across roads and so forth. I am working on a new procedure that may save some money on a daily tree episode, where we bring in either a crane or a bucket truck. There is new equipment out there now that could come in and do several trees. It's more expensive per day, but it can do an awful lot more. That could save on not only the equipment hire, but on police details as well. So I'm looking into that. The radio antenna would be the next one, only again that that has gone up in cost, so I'm asking for forty-three hundred, an increase of four hundred and forty-two dollars. Hazardous waste, we budgeted last year at thirteen fifty. We spent seventy-two hundred last year, fiscal twenty-one, I'm asking for thirty-five hundred. This is primarily what we pick up on the side of the road, and just about every day, we get a call for something. And it's not stuff that we can bring to the transfer station, it's usually mattresses or hazardous waste, paint, things that people can't get rid of on their own, so they leave for us, and then we have to haul them to a hazardous waste facility. The GIS engineering line was at three thousand, we asked for thirty-five hundred. Did you have this?
I didn't give it to you, but just go ahead and explain.
So what we based that thirty-five hundred on was the training and the maintenance fees for software and the license, test kits for testing the MS four, discharges now, and the lab testing for bacteria that we have to send away for MS four. So some of it we'll do in-house with test kits, some we will have to send out. That was the thirty-five hundred that I had put in. What I'm going to do is ask that we actually go to eight thousand this year, at one time, eight thousand. And that would give us the opportunity to get a, a new contr, a new upgrade from basic to standard on the license that our GIS coordinator uses, okay? It's forty-five hundred, so that would double the thirty-five hundred to eight for this year, and then next year, it would bring it back down to thirty-six, okay? Thirty-six, even though there are some extra charges next year that we don't have this year, it's still, we can do it for thirty-six. All right, so that's going to help with the MS four, which we need to get straightened out with DEP. So this new forty-five hundred dollar upgrade would allow us to do that, as well as things that the water department wants to get done, okay? So we were going to hold off on this, but it seems like we've got to get going on this sooner than later, so that's why we wanted to do that, okay? Office supplies, we went up eleven hundred dollars. We now have four of us in the office, and we're doing a lot more copying. We have an awful lot going on in there. GIS as well, she's got her own printer, she's doing a lot of things, she needs office supplies and so forth, so the stuff is very expensive when something lets go. And so we spent thirty-four hundred last year, and we're asking for thirty-five this year. And then the last one is the police detail. A perfect example of this is, you know, we had a blizzard a few weeks ago, and the blizzard was cleaned up, and we were pretty much done. And then we had two weeks, three weeks of melting snow of that blizzard on the side of the road, which created potholes like we've never seen before. The potholes not only have to be filled with pot mix, but we have to hire a detail to be out there with us. Years ago, we could get away with almost maybe eighty percent of the roads with just us out there doing it, and you can't anymore. I mean, the cops are almost getting hit, it's so bad. So there's very few, we do, we do divide it up, so just like the tree work, we do pothole work on streets that we feel it's safe, but any of the main roads, we have to hire a police detail. And the tree work, which we doubled this year, we did another thirty thousand, just about every one of those has a detail. And the details, usually for us in town, around six hundred and fifty dollars a day. So you figure out how far that goes, it gets eaten up pretty quick. So we spent twenty thousand last year, as of December, we had spelt, spent eleven grand, but I anticipate again that we're going to be using an awful lot of it, and we are, we're using them quite a few days of the week. Obviously, any basin work, anything now that we do on the side of the road, unless we can get off the road, we need police details for. When we have these storms that blow through and knock down half the town, and we're clearing it for several days, we do what we can, but there's some of them we need to have police detail for, so I think that's it.
Okay, any questions on this one? No? All right, I think we can skip snow, we've all been doing that for a number of years. Lighting?
Yep.
No increase?
At this point, no, and we're thinking because of the LED conversion that we're going to be doing later this season, in the next few months, it will reduce some of the cost of that.
Okay, um, waste disposal?
Waste disposal, I just forgot to put in the FY twenty-three request. We went over that budget last year, last fiscal year by thirteen thousand, so I think Dave and I are going to put a number in there. We know the, the hauling and the dumping is still going up. We used to be able to save a little money in that budget, but that has changed as well because of trucking. So, but we'll get that number set.
Okay, and tree warden stipend is this? Not stipend, dues, meetings, whatever it is. Anyone have any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a quick, any thoughts on capital, capital budget?
Thoughts on it, you mean what are we going to look for?
What, what are you planning to bring?
Right now, we've got the transfer station, which I'm.
Oh, that's right.
Right, which I'm trying to wrap up every incidental on that, so I can present it as a total package for building, septic, and all the things that we need with it. We may have a new truck that we're going to be asking for, it was on capital for the last three years, knowing that we were going to need it, anticipate it. And we're also looking at a new, possible new John Deere tractor to upgrade from the one we have, and we'll explain that too, and why we feel that's necessary, or as a possible solution to the problems we have out there right now, so.
It cracks me up that some of you guys, no offense, you always put the, the brand name of the tractor. He specifically said John Deere.
That's what it is, oh, it is a John Deere. All right.
Probably best you get.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome. Thanks, Chris. I'll wait for Cheryl.
Okay, um, the board of selectmen budget?
Sure, so budget twelve-twenty, there are only three increases, if I recall correctly, I guess I'll look at it. The first, the salary lines are all contractual. There are no other changes except for the audit line. We normally audit at twenty-two thousand dollars per year. Federal law is, is that if you receive seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more of federal money, you're required to also complete a federal audit. And because of the CARES funds, we have exceeded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first time, so we'll have to do a federal audit, which is five thousand dollars. Other than that, there are no other changes.
Okay, um, finance committee and finance committee reserve?
And they are both level funded year over year, no other changes.
Okay, um, the town election warrant. This is.
So it's a notification, it's a requirement of Mass General Law, that the town clerk notified the Board of Selectmen as the chief executive officer of the town as to what the warrant for the election will be. You can see what it is, and then each one of you would just, you would just sign it and vote to accept it as presented.
Okay, is there a motion to accept it as presented?
The which part?
The warrant?
The election warrant, so it's just the list of open seats?
Some of them.
Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
CPC?
Hi, Cheryl.
So I, I figure everybody has the memo, and what I typically do every year is kind of give you a list of what we're looking at for applications. We have not met yet, our next meeting is March fourteenth, which I believe is next week. So we have a few applications that we have received. The Public Works would like to submit an application for another hundred and ten thousand for the continued work in the town-owned cemeteries, and this would be phase three. I think everybody driving around town has probably seen, especially on South Street, they're doing a great job working on the gravestones. So this would be phase three. The Housing Authority is asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand for phase one of window repair and replacement at Estor Drive. The Veterans Affairs is looking to get five thousand dollars. It's probably going to be like a yearly event, and this was for research and eventually the installation of veteran plaques on gravestones. So there is a lot of research that would need to go into it through the gravestones, identify the people that have fought in wars, and, and then they make a list from there to get the plaques purchased and installed. And then the last one that we do have a copy of is the Public Works, and that's another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for permitting and engineering of the fish ladder. This is also an ongoing project. And I don't know if anybody has any questions after, maybe Chris could let you know the status of that. One, we're still working on trying to get an application probably from either the, probably the ag commission to work with the Howards that live on River Street. They have some land that they're interested in putting into an agricultural preservation restriction, and they're working with the state of Massachusetts, and I believe that they're ready to add their money. So we're just trying to see if we can't get the application completed this year, so we don't have to push it off to next year.
How much land does that involve, roughly?
Seventy acres, yeah. Yeah.
That would be nice to get that in there.
Yes, yes, and I know, you know, especially with the state working on it and having their paperwork close, it would be nice to be able to present it. So we've been kind of working with them a little bit beyond the deadline, so. So hopefully we will see that and have it maybe something by the fourteenth, when we meet. And then I just kind of summarized that we did meet last year. We, we voted the, as a committee, to accept our new plan that was worked on by the, the preservation consultant that we were using, who we don't have, by the way, anymore.
Oh, no.
I know, they're, they're changing their focus on what they want to, they don't want to really work with towns doing just like smaller CPA things, they're into like master plans and that type of thing, so. But the coalition is available for any kind of questions that we have. They're really a great resource for the committee, so we'll probably lean on them until, if anything changes, you know, going forward, so. So the last is, I like to give you guys just an idea of what kind of money we have in the fund going into town meeting. Now, it does, it is noted that the, the fund balance is fluid because it's changing with, like the, we will have another payment done this year for the Friendship Park, the new playground. So there's expenses coming in and going out. So as of right now, in the buckets, we have about thirty thousand dollars for open space and recreation, we have about sixty-seven hundred dollars for historic preservation, and then housing has a hundred and ninety-eight, almost a hundred and ninety-eight-five. And the total that we're anticipating to collect this year is about two hundred and sixty-two thousand, so.
Okay, any questions?
Just one thing I just want to make you know, the warrant does close on March eighteenth, so if, whatever you can do with the Howards, so we can make sure, because in order for us to process everything, the selectmen vote on that date.
On the eighteenth?
Yeah, they've already voted, because that's the date that we need everything, everything then goes to town council eventually to the printer.
Okay.
To get multiple votes, so.
I believe I have that on my calendar, that we have to have all of this.
So if you can have done for March fourteenth, you're great.
Yes.
But like I noticed in there, it said, hopefully you can have it from May twenty-twenty-two, but we need everything by March eighteen.
Yeah, well, I was thinking, if it doesn't happen, it's going to have to get pushed to next year.
No, I understand, which hopefully it doesn't, but.
I hope so too, so I know Chris has been in talks with the representative from the state, so. And I've been really on everybody to make sure that they attend my meeting on the fourteenth, so I have everybody there, and well, you know, there won't be any questions or forms, and so I think we're good though, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Awesome, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Okay, um, annual town report dedication. So we have four, or we'll dust and then, oh, that's last year's, then that's.
Yeah, I just gave it as an example, so in twenty-twenty, because Mr. Pickering was a previous selectman, you put him on the inside cover, and he dedicated the book in his memory. And then in memoriam, you had the other two gentlemen, and so I was just giving you as an example, so you know. You know, you don't have to do, you could, excuse me, you could do, ooh, I'm so sorry. You could do all four of them in memoriam, if you want to dedicate one or multiple, we've done that in the past. You know, so it's whatever, whatever the board prefers.
Do you know how long each served on these boards?
Oh, that's Ryan Burns.
Yeah, I know. So I don't know how long Ryan served, Ryan was certainly young.
Six years, maybe?
It could be, it could be. My guess is John probably served for a very long time on the zoning board, but that was before my time, I don't know. So, my guess is, without knowing any more information, my guess is John probably served the longest out of everybody, but I, I'm fully speculating.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking it would have been John.
Yeah, but absent facts, I just want to list them equally.
And you could do that, you know, for example, if, if instead of doing, you could do a dedication memory of all four, we've not done that in the past, but that's entirely up to you, or instead of dedicating it to one person, on the right, you could see just put in memoriam of all four of them equally, and then we'll come up with something different to put on the inside cover.
I kind of like that idea.
That sounds good.
Yeah, it's hard to pick one over the other.
I agree.
Yeah, right.
I think that's fair. Have we heard from any of the families, do we know any of them, if they have interest in this at all?
We, we normally don't hear from them.
So I'll go with that?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think if, don't mind just taking a vote for it, please.
All right, is there a vote to have all four listed? All right, is there a vote to have all four listed in memoriam?
I make a motion to list all four decedents in memoriam equally, with, or with their titles, or whatever board they were on.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the ratification of two personnel employment contracts. First, we have the executive assistant. Is there a motion to approve that contract as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay, I'll second it. Is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a, the ratification of the town administrator's contract, is there a motion for that one? To approve as presented?
So moved.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, we have the town stress code policy, which I believe we all had the chance to see. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, not unless either.
Excuse me?
No.
Oh.
All right, I will second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed?
No.
Okay, vote to accept Nate Mayor's resignation? Is there a motion?
So moved, and if we could send along a letter thanking him, a letter of appreciation for his work for our town.
Yeah, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Assessors have requested to reclassify the principal clerk to head administrative secretary. David, do you want to explain what they're looking to do?
Yep, so you may recall that during the budget presentation, they stated that they were inputting, inputting into their budget to fund for this effective July first, assuming town meeting approval. So we would wait until town meeting approval, then at that point, being a collective bargaining agreement, you have final say as to whether or not you can reclassify, and so, subject to town meeting approval, we would bring it back to the board and you would take a vote at that point. What was interesting is that this past week, we received this letter from the assessors saying that they now have reviewed their budget and they believe that they could actually move forward the date to April eleventh. I've not formally met with the union, that's something that I always do in advance, so I'm not prepared to speak to it. But my other concern is, is that I don't think it's the appropriate time to take this vote. Daniella does an excellent job, so it has nothing, no reflection on her. But we don't know what town meeting is going to fund, so just so you know procedurally, is if you were to take a vote now and you approved it, she would be moved into that new step effective April eleventh as requested, but if town meeting doesn't approve the funds for next year, what do you do? You're stuck. Like, you, they won't have the money. So they may very well be accurate that they may have enough money in their FY twenty-two current year budget to fund it from April eleventh until June thirtieth, but they, it is impossible for them to know that they have enough money to fund it thereafter. And so I just think that from a financial business standpoint, we really need to make sure that town meeting approves the increase, and then the selectmen then have the flexibility at that point to make the decision after town meeting, which is scheduled for May ninth. So my recommendation is, is that we take no action on this until after town meeting votes on the budget, and in the meantime, we would just inform them as to why you took no action. Again, I don't, I don't think it's any negative reflection, you may very well vote for it, but it's. It's, they can't guarantee, once we vote on it and she receives the reclassification, it's guaranteed going forward, and we can't guarantee it if we don't have the money. So I just think it's a little premature. And you have a memo in there from the HR director who's reviewed it, and it's, and, you know, she feels the same way.
Does anyone have any comments on this, or is there a motion to table it until after town meeting?
Make a motion to table it until after town meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Personal bylaw. I have not had the opportunity to review this yet. David, do you want to explain it first, I guess?
Yeah, so over the past couple of years, the board has, has asked me, as we've had some issues with contracts of members that do not answer to the Board of Selectmen, certainly in reference to either compensation and/or benefits. Last year, as chair, Denise tasked me with getting some information, we've worked on it with, with town council, and so we have come to this conclusion that this is the simplest, easiest way for us to do it. Excuse me, in essence, what this bylaw amendment would be, is that for those employees that have employment contracts with boards other than the Board of Selectmen, is that the Board of Selectmen would have final ratification authority. You're currently the personnel bylaw, not the personnel board, excuse me, you're currently the personnel board is set forth by the, the personnel bylaw, but it doesn't give you final ratification authority over those contracts that you do not oversee. And in order for us to make sure that there's some standards of our benefits being set, we should have some checks and balances. So I'm presenting to you as to what I believe the spirit of it is, unless you have real objection to any of the language, I don't think that a vote from the board is needed at this point because it's quite premature. The bylaw study committee has to review it, and so the HR director would be forwarding a memo over to the bylaw study committee informing them that, that she believes that this is a necessary requirement. The bylaw study committee would review it, make whatever recommendations specific to this and/or other language changes, it would come back before this board, and then you have final say as to what the language is and whether or not you want to place it at town meeting or not.
I, I think it's an important move that, and, as David said, it is something I tasked him with. Over the years, we've seen boards and committees caught up for months, if not years, on personnel issues that really shouldn't, that shouldn't happen. It should be clear, it should be concise. I think Linda does a very good job of speaking to personnel issues, and she's available. So I think this is a, an important move in the right direction. It would apply to roughly, I think, six additional employees. It would not affect the schools, schools are on their own, they're independent.
Yep.
Did you say this change is only going to affect six?
Because the current employees are already under it, we have six that aren't.
Gotcha.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to forward it to the bylaw study committee?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief?
You all ready?
All ready?
Sorry, I'm not clean shaven, but I spent a few days in Florida, got a little too much sun, so. I can't really shave yet.
We haven't figured out what.
It would, wouldn't be there, yeah. So, I don't know how you want me to do, like normally, just kind of go over the budgets that are going up a little bit. So most of it's contractual, appointed official, myself, clerical, two percent, two percent for the custodian. Permanent salaries is going up, two, you know, everybody get a two percent raise, plus I have six patrolmen and two dispatchers actually get an additional step. Last year, we were in good shape, we only had two people, so this year's going to be a little more, I hadn't looked at a lot next year, but, so you got eight people, get an additional step, plus two percent, which works out to that figure there. All the salaries, same thing. I went in front of finance committee last year or the year before, and they were a little upset that the part-time employees weren't getting their two percent raises, you know, because they're not contractual, so they asked me to put it in as a two percent raise for, regardless, whatever the union got, they got, even though they were, they were comparable pay with other towns and cities, but, so those two percents are covering the dispatches, crossing guards, matrons, that's that line there for other salaries. Overtime, all the overtime accounts, which you'll see, sick and injury, holiday, vacation, court, and personal bereavement, those are all overtime lines, so those are up three percent, basically, just covering the raise plus, you know, so that'll cost me more money to pay the person, so it just brings up the three percent up. Telephone, I had to go up, I've been under budget there for a little bit, so I just put some money in that line. Other supplies, same thing, supplies are going through the roof, I've never hit that line, so I raised that two thousand dollars. Same with computer supplies, I upped that three thousand dollars, and if you look at the past five years, you'll see I'm not even close.
Should we make them more in line to what the actual expense has been?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that. I've been lucky the last couple of years, and believe it or not, because of COVID, I've saved a lot of money, and I will be this year, in three lines, because my in-service training, there was all by Zoom, and so a lot of the guys did it on, on shift, so we didn't have to send them for overtime. Being court is way down. So those two lines, I'm probably going to save fifty or so, the last couple of years, that's what I've been able to do. Next year, who knows, could just go back to normal, we hope, but, so I've been able to subsidize it with that. So I think I'd be okay for next year, we might want to look at it next year, see how those two lines come back, because I'm basically subsidizing with those lines.
Right.
Gasoline, I went up two thousand dollars. This year, I believe I'm going to be between six and eight thousand over, if it's estimated. Gas is just going crazy, and I'll be able to cover that because of those lines, too. But next year, I just went up to the two thousand. I already had about twenty-five thousand in gasoline expenses to date, and my line is thirty, so there's no way for the next, I'm going to do it for five thousand, it's not going to happen. Service contracts, they've gone up a little bit, I've actually left this alone a little bit, but it's catching up to me now, so I upped that fifteen hundred dollars. You just see the holiday one went way up, I didn't really, that, that's because of the new holiday in June.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, so that wasn't budgeted, obviously, last year, I was able to cover it because of those two lines, but, so that's why you see that's quite a bit higher than the actual three percent. I don't know if there's any questions on those.
Are you losing PIs and specials with police reform?
Yeah, we lost anybody, we lost actually a lot of specials because, in a turn, our dispatching program, because that dispatching program, years passed, we had specials, and all they did is road jobs, so they really didn't do anything for the department as a whole, they just did road jobs, you know, so they were making extra money, but we were really, we weren't getting the benefit out of it. So probably six or seven years ago, I started a program that, the dispatcher program, so you'd be dispatched, you had to give the town sixteen hours a week on the desk for relatively short money, so we got something out of it, and then once you were there six, seven months and you, we thought that you were a good fit, we allowed them to either A, go to this part-time academy, or most of them already had it, and then I sent a letter to this board asking them to become specials, so now they give us a service for relatively cheap, but then on the other days, they can make quite a bit of money. Post has changed all of that. We can no longer do that. Everybody has to be trained full-time, so they can't work part-time, they can, but they have to be full-time academy trained. So we've lost all of those people to be able to do that. Now, all I can do is hire basically retired personnel, and, you know, retired West Bridgewater people, or I just put in front of the board Richie Long, who was a retired lieutenant from State Police that I worked with for many years in the Drug Task Force, so I'm trying to be very picky on who we get, but we've lost that ability to build from within, you know, you know, and mentor and get the young personnel that we might want to see as a full-time West Bridgewater person, we've lost that because of post. So that's a shame. There is some hope that I might be able to keep some of them, as the sheriff from the county is basically saying he is not part of Post, because the sheriffs have not, quote, police officers. So believe it or not, they might be able to work that in, and if they do, I might be able to keep some of those part-timers, because he's willing to swear them in as a sheriff, but they're still a West Bridgewater police officer. So we might be able, with finagling, trying to be able to hold on to these people, we're lucky, we use them for the dispatch and road jobs, but many communities, especially on the Cape, use them, you know, as full-time police officers, even though they're not full-time academy trained. So we'll still see if that works, but yeah, it has hurt us quite a bit.
Any questions?
No.
No, all right. Animal control?
Animal control, I say it every year, I've never gone up in this line, we've always been able to do it for this amount of money, it's the best bang for the buck. I bet you it was still cheaper than we were twenty-five years ago, when we had our own animal control. We put it up for bid, every three years, we're coming up this year for another bid, cross our fingers that we get a business to bid on it, I think we will, I've had some talks with a few, and like I said, it works, it's reasonable, I have no complaints about it, so we got to hope that, like I said, the bid is going to go out pretty soon, I'm going to sign up for July first for another three years, so, but I haven't gone up in anything in that budget.
Sounds good, any questions?
My questions have to relate to capital budget, are you planning to bring anything?
Yeah, I already dropped those off last week.
Okay.
I'm requesting only one cruiser.
Okay.
This year, and to replace one of the motorcycles. We have a two thousand and six motorcycle, I'd like to upgrade that with the trade in the new one, it's around fifteen for that. Our program works well, the bikes are out pretty much from May till first of the year, and we're also part of Semlack, which our guys, you know, assist other communities as they assist us. You know, we're part of that group, so we have something that happens here, twenty bikes could come here at no cost to the town.
Oh, wow.
It's shared resources, and that's what we do, so it's a really good program, and like I said, the two thousand and seven is about time to switch it in, get a new bike. That's the only two items I put on the capital budget.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Have a good night. Vote to approve the November seventeenth meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
The November, I mentioned us Mr. Anderson several times, but yes, I will make a motion to approve. Yeah, but. Yeah, there were a couple spots, does that matter? I've never mentioned it before.
I mean, if that's the case, we shouldn't, let's, let's correct it.
We should correct that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Except, if you don't mind, the vote can just say to approve the meeting minutes with a correction of Ms. Anderson versus Mr. Anderson. Yeah, sorry, we'll tell.
That's okay.
All right, is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And accept for review the December first meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So there is a special permit and site plan for S and D auto sales, one eighty-one South Main Street. What are they looking to do, Dave?
So this here, really, this one is very, very simple, because it is a used car lot looking to go into a vacant used car lot. It was, it used to be Auto Drive One, it's on, it's heading down south.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's heading down South Main Street on the right-hand side, heading towards Bridgewater, it's been vacant, they, they left in twenty eighteen, so there really is no issues, it's exactly perfect for what they're looking to do, they just have to go through the site plan review process and the special permit process through the zoning board of appeals, so again, it's, this one.
So again, this one is very simple and straightforward.
So are there any comments to send to the zoning board? I do not have any.
No, I don't have any. It's the same type of business going into the same location. Were there any complaints that we know of, neighbors around?
Not specific to that, no.
Yeah, okay. No, I don't have any comments.
All right, so is there a motion to, I guess, give our support to the zoning board?
So moved.
Second?
On the paper?
Aye.
Aye. In the next one, probably shouldn't be on here, we don't typically go over residential applications, just commercial?
Yeah, no, my apologies, it shouldn't be on here. So if you want to just either vote to take no action on or just choose to not take any action, whatever you prefer.
I'll choose not to do anything. Public comment period. Anyone have anything? No? Town Administrator's report?
So you all received an email from State Senator Timolty earlier in the week or last week. Every single year, he does contact the town, ask for what our budget priorities are as he initiates the budget process. So I just placed in here, this is what we have done. You guys took a standing vote last year, so you could see that we put in for Matfield Street and intersection for research on chapter 40B projects, upgrades to the improvements for the rail trail. The $20,000 for conservation land was funded last year, so I would be able to delete that. And then we also put in $200,000 for sidewalks and $2.5 million for water treatment plant. So I use this as an example, I can send over the same letter minus the conservation land or if you want to make wholesale changes to it, it's whatever you prefer.
Can we change the priority? I think sidewalks and water treatment plant would be my priorities.
Sure, I mean, I didn't list them in any order, but by all means, no, no, by all means, if you would prefer me to, then I will be more than happy to make that change.
That's, I think that's a good suggestion to prioritize them. I'd like to keep the $25,000 on there for a 40B study and I think we've asked for this for at least five years now. And it's not a lot of money to ask, but I think we're going to be especially challenged now that we have the MBTA multi-housing zoning going into effect. You combine the two, that's going to, could potentially significantly increase housing in West Bridgewater. I know other towns have tried to defend their position in a 40B fight or at least a disagreement as to what's being relaxed for a 40B. Some think they've prevailed, but it really only resulted in maybe they get a few, few extra acres that aren't going to be built on. It's not really a win-win situation, but my feeling is 40B statute is so outdated and really does not accomplish what it was set out to do when it was enacted. And I think it's time for a good study of it and how it affects communities like us very negatively.
That sounds like something that should be done at the state level, though, not, not a fight that we would do from our town.
We wouldn't be fighting it. We would be arming ourselves with research, professional research, that states our position and then why it needs to be addressed. Right now, the way towns have gone on it, you've probably read about it, where they go to court. Because whatever the reason is with the 40B, they just don't feel it should fit. But a lot of times they're not able to really elaborate on their reasoning. And they might get something in court, but usually it ends up with no, the 40B is put in. And many times the courts have awarded the plaintiff with their attorney fees. So the town ends up paying for their attorney fees as well as trying to defend their position on a 40B. It needs to be done in a professional and with extensive study if we're going to ever try to change these 40B laws.
Could change them for our town or change them for the state?
They should be, they should be changed overall, but in particular for a town like West Bridgewater, we cannot sustain the amount of building, and now you add to it, this MBTA multi-zoning. How are we going to sustain ourselves? We're going to end up with housing that's going to force us to build another school much sooner than we anticipate.
Oh, no, I 100% agree with you, yeah. And it's just whether or not that $25,000 is actually going to have a true beneficial purpose to it. I mean, it has a good purpose, but will anything actually come of it?
You never can count on actually anything coming out of any study you do, but right now we've done nothing but talk about it for years and, and no one's actually, we've not done anything because we don't have anything to support. We have no research. I mean, my hope is it helps West, only to help West Bridgewater. If it helps other towns, that's great, but I think we are unfairly treated when it comes to a 40B because of the size of our community, right off the bat. I think small towns like us have a significant disadvantage when it comes to a 40B.
I'm just looking at this strategically, looking at, this was the request he received last year, he funded the lowest amount possible on there, which was $20,000. And that gets him a point for helping West Bridgewater. If we want to strategically say, hey, we need help with money, should we be talking about a little bit higher of a threshold so we can't get these little tiny? I helped you, I mean, that's all I could do. No, 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 let's get some real help. Let's ask for...
I like your strategy. If you think that'll work, I'm all in favor, take off my 40B and go for the full 200.
I'm just looking at it strategically.
The Democratic Senate's never going to give us 40 grants to challenge a 40B.
Right.
I think it was 25.
But if the lowest amount on there is...
25,000.
Yeah, we're just never, they're never going to support giving a town money to challenge chapter 40B.
Yeah.
Realistically. I mean, I would like to have it too.
I would love to have it, yeah.
But realistically, they're just never going to do it.
Then, you know, I've been trying for this for so many years, if we don't think it will ever come to fruition, I say we give up on it.
So honestly, it's digital ink.
Yeah.
So I like the idea of prioritizing this in order and what I can do is just retain the reference to the 40B project, I will just list it last and...
But if that one gets funded, I'm going to be...
Versus what, though? I mean, the...
So what I'm saying is we keep, unless you want to add another item to this list, is that we just repurpose this list. I'm going to assume that the treatment plant would be number one.
Yes.
If so, I do want to say that with your permission, I would increase it to probably $3.5 million based on inflation over the past year in some of the quotes. So I would think that would be number one and then you would have to tell me, I mean, it's either sidewalks or Matfield Street that's number two and I would assume the other one is three.
Sidewalks, then Matfield.
So I think, I think I like Mary's strategy, I would take the others right off.
Because if he wants to be able to say that he's helping us...
If that's the objective, is to get something that's very meaningful, then...
Let's ask for it.
I would go with her strategy.
Okay, so...
We've already partially funded water or have a plan to.
Right, maybe we could put a note...
Well...
How much is funded?
Right, so we have funded the short-term carbon filtration system, but eventually we are going to...
But with ARCA, we have a plan to.
We do.
Right, there was one point.
So I think we should do, I honestly think Matfield should be above sidewalks. I'd like to see just three, water, Matfield, sidewalks.
I would, is that a motion?
Sure. Yes, that's a motion.
In what, and are you saying what order?
Water, Matfield, sidewalks.
I think that intersection, that Matfield is, it's terrible. And the people in that area have been constantly requesting this. And I think they're absolutely right. Someone, you know, it's just, it's a terrible intersection. And while the sidewalks would be nice, I think when it comes to preservation of life, I'd go with that second.
Yeah.
Right.
Is $400,000 enough for funding up the Signal project?
I would say at this point, probably not. We probably realistically should increase our request to $500, if not $600.
Probably 600, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion of second, on the paper?
Wait, we went water treatment plant, Matfield sidewalks for, we're doing 2.5 ballpark for water treatment, once we subtract out the money we've already allocated. For Matfield, we're saying 600.
600, yeah.
For sidewalks, is 200 enough for that particular piece that we're looking to do? Because 200,000 is a very small...
Maybe run it by Chris and then adjust it as you guys see fit.
This is specifically for the center of town.
Well, that was, that was just a narrative because what he always asked me is that if he has to debate it on the floor, is he can't just say, I want sidewalks. So I give him a little bit of a narrative. But I gave him that as a narrative, but they don't approve it with the narrative. So he could say, okay, I'll give you $200,000 and we end up using it somewhere else. So, so I guess, real quickly, so the water treatment plant, was it $3.5 million or was it $2.5 million?
It's $3.5 million less the money already allocated, right? So it would, we would really just be requesting.
We haven't officially allocated, right? We just have a plan.
We earmarked it.
We earmarked it. But I mean, to be honest with you, if we could get $3.5 million to do this, it would give us a million dollars to be able to do other areas that we need to in town.
I thought the water treatment plant was, I don't know why it had this number, I thought it was like five or six million. Actually, I think it was seven, I thought was the number, was seven million, but maybe I'm thinking of something else.
So the truth of the matter is, is that a year ago, $2.5 million was the realistic number. With inflation, two things, in one inflation and two, you know, DEP didn't do us any favors with PFAS because they've put all of us now, literally as competitors against each other in a short period of time for the few handful of places that can build a water treatment plant. But guess what happens when you do that, right? Just supply and demand. So the last time I talked to Wayne, he said I wouldn't be surprised if it was five or six million dollars, but we don't have a definitive number on that. And truthfully, if this gets funded, let's assume great, perfect gets funded, you're probably still two to three years before you can actually get a permit. Who knows what happens with pricing at that point? So it could come down, right? But I'll put whatever number you think, but realistically, $3.5 million would be the floor, $7 million would probably be the ceiling. And obviously, as we start to ask for too much, we start to price ourselves out.
You want to ask for five? Right in the middle? I mean, I wouldn't want to get 2.5 and only hear a year from now that that's what you asked for.
Well, that was my question, if, if it's not enough money, yeah.
I mean, look, if it's not enough money, one, sooner or later, you know, the town's the one using it, so the town's going to have to kick in something. But if we, if we, I personally think that we should probably, we increase it to at least $3.5 million, then we have the million dollars from ARCA, that gets us a $4.5 million. And because it's going to take two or three years to go through the permitting process, if a year from now, we recognize we're a million short, we ask for another million. And if not, then unfortunately we have to bond it, but it gives us another second bite of the apple.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I think we voted to.
We had a motion and a second, did we vote?
You did not vote. Aye.
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 And the motion was, I understand the order, treatment plant, Matfield, sidewalks, intersection is $600,000. I just want to confirm as to what numbers I'm using for the water treatment plant and the sidewalks.
3.5 on water?
3.5 and I think 200.
Yeah.
All right, got it?
I'd as well.
All right.
All right, so we'll send that out. Next one is National Grid. As you know, we have started the process to be able to convert over to LED. I have processed all the paperwork that's required on behalf of the town. We have received pre-approval. The nice thing is after doing the math, we, they expect or anticipate that we will have LED lights all throughout the town by December 21st, 2021. And at that point, assuming that everything is installed and passed, we will then receive a one-time check for $40,239 and that would be in addition to whatever our savings is after that going forward, which right now is projected to be somewhere around $15,000 per year. And the next on my agenda is just FYIs for a person running for Water Commissioner who needed the transfer station to collect signatures, a WBYAA opening parade in April, and also an FYI that I approve deficit spending for FY '22 snow and ice out of DPW Department.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
On the paper?
Aye.
Aye.